City Council meeting. We have one public hearing. It's an ordinance and...
This is, thank you, this is GA-04-15. The first reading of an ordinance, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, many chapter six, park regulations, section sixteen dash four, G five, of the Punta Gorda Code to permit leased dogs in Alice Park, Pittman Park, and on Nature Park walkways providing for conflict inseparability and providing effective date.
Anyone speaking to this, Howard?
No. The ordinance is basically opening up Alice Pittman Park and the Nature Trail in Nature Park for be pet friendly. That's all we're doing.
Okay. Comments, questions?
Is it on that?
Pardon?
Oh, should we?
Yes.
I have some concerns about the Nature Park. I know that we've limited it to the walkways. However, on Fridays, there's about twenty, sometimes even thirty of the gardeners over there and they're working over there. And if a dog happens to be taking a walk out there in the green, as people might want to take their dog to look at the shrubs and the plantings over there, the dogs will be on a leash, of course, but it's kind of up to the people that are working in the gardens over there to maybe advise the person walking the dog that the dog is not allowed to be there. And in my mind, it may present some confrontational type of issues. And I think maybe we, I would like us to reconsider allowing dogs in a nature park.
Are there comments?
Well, we've received requests from people to be able to walk their dog through the trail. And it would seem if we were to put some signage up, you know, dogs on trail only or...
I know there's been some concerns about people not cleaning up after their pets.
Right. But that concern is everywhere.
So... But at the same time, I appreciate what you're saying. Other comments? Rachel?
Um, you know, the other request was to allow dogs to be walked on the roadway through Ponce de Leon Park, and we had some concerns about that. I mean, I guess I would see this as a trial, possibly, to see if people are going to abide by the rules. Because the dogs, I'm on the checkboard and I looked into their rules, and there are rules from the state of Florida that deal with pets in state parks. And one of them is the length of the leash. I mean, they go down to, like, we had that discussion about retractable leashes and state law, state parks, there are rules about the length of the leash for the dog. I sent it to Howard, you know, last time we had this discussion. Maybe we want to put up even, you know, those regulations to be consistent because the pets are allowed in check on the marked paths and, you know, with the rules that they pick up and the length of the leash and that thing. I thought Nature Park was a good idea. I understand your concerns. You know, if it does become a nuisance, I would think that the people working there would probably just call PGPD and have them address it.
Rather than, I just don't want, I want to try and avoid the situation where somebody working as a volunteer has to tell an individual walking a dog that you're on the lawn, you shouldn't, you know, you can't be here, please leave and go back on the walkway. I just don't think it's a good situation.
Do we have that problem in Gilchrist, Howard? I mean, is it a problem where people are saying, and you live over there, Kim, you know, because they are allowed on the harbor walk, but they're not allowed in the park? So, do we see that as an issue or most people comply?
If you're asking me, are there dogs in the park area as opposed just the harbor walk? The answer is most definitely yes. But if you're asking me if it's an issue, I have not seen it as an issue. But are people not obeying just walking their dog along the harbor walk? No, they are not all obeying.
Well, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone wish to address the council at this time on this issue? This is a public hearing. Third call for a public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so...
Move approval, GA-04-15.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve, GA-04-15. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye. That's two. Three to two. We have no quasi judicial public hearings. We have no additional ordinances. We have our consent agenda. Is there any items that council wishes to pull? No items to pull. This is citizens' comments on consent agenda items only, which includes our minutes, our invoices, a resolution to approve pre-annexation with Park Hill Manor Mobile Home Park, a utility rate impact fee study, an art gallery in History Park, and also submission of a grant application by Chenep. Yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Robert Murphy. I'm the president of Park Hill, Inc., and I'm representing the residents of Park Hill Manor.
Welcome.
And we want to thank the city for considering us, for being a part of the community, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments regarding our consent agenda items?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, Nancy?
I'd just like to say welcome home to the Park Hill residents.
Yes. Yes, thank you. Thank you. At these, at this time, we'll accept comments on regular agenda items. And we understand that many of you are probably here to address the Alligator Creek access to Charlotte Harbor cut through. I would like to remind everyone that the council and staff have received a significant amount of input regarding the cut through. We've had presentations on the study conducted by Hans Wilson on behalf of private citizens. We've had letters, emails, and personal communications, as well as much input at our April 6th workshop. And by our count, we had approximately eight hundred and fifty people at that workshop. Staff has done an admirable job in summarizing all of our citizens' input, which is part of our agenda packets. And it includes the perceived positive impact from the project, the perceived negative impact, comments regarding financing the project, and also comments regarding the approval process. If you feel compelled to offer comments, you are more than welcome to do so. We would be particularly appreciative of any new information. In addition to the cut through, we will accept comments on two other agenda items: approval of barber poles and review of Charlotte County's revisions to mineral resource extraction, future land use designation. We would ask you to sign in, state your name, and you would have three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to make comments on these agenda items? Please come forward, sign in, state your name, and if you are representing an organization, please so indicate. You will have three minutes.
I'm Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance, as well as the Alligator Access Committee. And I'd like to thank the council at this time for the patience with all of the emails, and I'm sure you've been covered over one way or the other. I'd just like to say that the engineering, Hans Wilson, is here, who did the preliminary engineering, and his credentials are unquestionably wonderful and is well-respected in all the aspects. And we would just, he's happy to answer any questions you may have of him. And if there is any question about anything involving the engineering, the quality of water, this type of thing, he's been working in this area for years. And he's considered an expert by all of the permitting agencies. So, he is certainly qualified to answer any controversy or questions that you may have.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Have you signed in? Thank you.
My name's Thomas Megg.
And speaking to the microphone, please.
My name's Thomas Megg. I'm just a local fisherman, commercial fisherman.
Wait, sir, I can't hear you. Please state your name.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. I'm Thomas Megg. I'm just a local commercial fisherman. I'm requiring here about, I believe you're calling Bird Pass. This is a little area, it's also known as Gardener Creek. And I don't know, I've heard all the people that you've done researches with, but I haven't heard anybody say anything about a DEP. I fish these waters. I've been fishing them since I was a baby. And that little area back in there is a refuge for cobia, snook, sand brim, and angelfish. And they breed there all winter long. There's little pools that they built back in there where the mosquito ditches, the warm water from mosquito ditches come in and help them survive the winters in those waters. I ask you to get the DEP involved with us before you take what private citizens' researches have done. We have an awesome research center over here with WWC in Murdock. Get them to research it. Get the DEP to research it. If you destroy this area, you're going to destroy a safety zone for cobia, which is very, all the fishermen here love this fish, the snook, the sand brim, the angelfish. Angelfish is a very, very important fish to our waters. People don't eat them, but they do a lot for us. And the more we deplete these, the worse it's going to be. And I ask you to please look at this a little closer. Get the DEP involved, please. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Dave Tramley from resident bird section. I wrote this because I have a tendency to ramble. I'm also a business, an ex-business person who's a pragmatist. I've heard enough opinion, rumor, possible misinformation, innuendo, and et cetera. Let's let the experts get some facts so we can work with one. Census of boats in high season going down Alligator and past the point at the canal where the, where the cut would be. Two, the EPA and the Corps of Engineers are eminently qualified to determine whether this will add pollution to Alligator Creek. Three, the expert opinion of three qualified real estate people, not locals, as to whether the real estate values will go up or down in connection and opinion gets no, or conjecture and opinion get us nowhere, get the facts, and if it's doable, do it. If it's not, drop it. In the final analysis, we're all neighbors, let's act like it.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Ray?
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to speak in regard to seven eight.
State your name.
I'm Ray Rose, representing the Punta Gorda Isles Civic Association. PGICAA at this time neither supports nor opposes the project. There is a need for more information before commenting on the merits of the Bird Cut Through Project. As of to today's topic, which is really who should take the lead in the project, we have the following comments. The discussion of the Bird Section cut through has been centered on the benefits to a portion of the Bird Section boaters. A broader approach would be to look at it as a possible enhancement to all existing canal systems. If completed, it could offer options not only to the Bird Section, but to all of the South PGI Canal Section, BSI, and the county residents as an alternate traffic route for both convenience, refuge, or in case of a blockage of Ponce or Alligator Creek. There are significant issues to resolve before the project could be completed. Probably the most difficult is the permitting of basically a new canal cut to include environmental issues. This is really a city expertise and responsibility. Securing the property by purchase, lease, or right-of-way. Reportedly, the owner suggested $400,000 with an indication there might be other options. A realistic approach could be negotiation between the city manager and the property owner, where all options could be reviewed prior to council having to make a decision. The citizens' group cannot offer many of the potential options, and council would have to negotiate under the Sunshine Rules, where the city options are publicly exposed prior to negotiation. Third item is funding of the project. If the cut benefits multiple users other than the presently defined boundaries, there is a legitimate question as to who benefits and pays. Looking at broader issues may open funding opportunities not available if we only can look at a limited base user. The city has many more funding options than the citizens' group could provide, to include many outside sources of revenue. The broader use base would also provide a strong support to go back to the permitting process. Once the permitting and land acquisition issues are resolved, the final project cost may be determined and a decision made as to whether the project is feasible or should be abandoned. The process will permit all impacted parties to be heard and should provide more accurate traffic estimates and impacts on the environment and water quality. We support the path forward with the city leading while working with the citizens' groups in appropriate county functions. Thank you for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ray.
My name's Ralph McCarty. I live in BSI, and I'm not, I don't know that I'm for or against this, but I say, you know, $400,000 for a piece of land that's useless is kind of outrageous to me. People who bought in that area, because we looked, we moved here two years ago, we decided we weren't going to be in that part of PGI because it's a long way to go to get out. So, we made a decision to move to BSI. And I'm not putting people down for being there, but I looked at it and I say, okay, my understanding is, I haven't seen all the costs. There's a capital cost to do this, and there's a maintenance cost to do this. Who's going to pay the maintenance cost? As an example, my understanding is that those of us who live along Alligator Creek, we pay taxes to maintain that creek. Does that mean the people in the Bird Section are going to also pay taxes to maintain Alligator Creek? And I haven't heard any numbers about that because there's a maintenance cost. And I'm not against it or afford. I mean, people say there's no water flow. Well, there is water flow between them. There is kind of a little canal through there. So, I just want to know, if the people are going to vote for this, do they understand there's a maintenance cost, and are they going to pay their fair taxes to maintain all of Alligator Creek?
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Left side. Your name, please?
My name is Dennis Clark, Punta Gorda, 33950. Approximately ten years ago, Councilman Bill Albers was going to get in touch with the EPA and the Army Corps of Engineers because it was questioned right after he came on the council as to why this could not be done. Mr. Koenig informed him that we had a, at the time, there was a moratorium on the canal cut-throughs and things like that. And so, it was just, nothing else was ever said about it, but Mr. Albers said that he would contact them and let us know. I never heard another thing on that. My personal suggestion, I would say, is we should have the Army Corps of Engineers, the EPA, get an unbiased opinion from both of them, and until that happens, I think this whole project should be shelved. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
My name is Len Garofoli. One of the things that I just wanted to address to council is, somebody's saying, yes, there's pros and cons, and there's two sides of the story, but what we're not seeing here at the meeting is, one of the things that this canal is going to benefit is to the number of businesses that are involved within the marine industry, within this county, and within this city. Whether it's the dealers, whether it's the mechanics, whether it's the surveyors, whether it's the divers, we are a boating community, and this county and this city benefits a lot from the marine industry and the people who work in the marine industry. And this project, I think, is a plus towards that, and that avenue should be looked at also when you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Bob Ames, and I'm a PGI resident. Been there for thirteen years. We live on the Rim Canal, and we've been there for thirteen years. The stories about thousands of boats going through the problems, I gotta admit, if we see six boats in a day go by our house, it's a busy day. And so, the story, the potential of thousands of boats, sure, that's if every person took their boat out on that day. That's never going to happen. Another thing, as far as a concern about the cost of the land they're buying, the value of anything is what someone's willing to pay for it. That's what determines the value. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay, if I can remind everyone, if, we don't need to repeat the same arguments. Okay, so, but, yes, sir.
Hi. My name is John For, and I am against the city sponsoring this project. The city will become embroiled in this project if the expense of other projects. I think the service to the rest of the city will suffer, and no matter what administrative fee you charge, you will not recoup our taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the current plan is flawed, and I believe that it will have great difficulty passing regulatory review. The plan calls for cutting a path through undisturbed ground. Getting permission in this day and age to disturb ground that has relationships to mangraves and protected species will be timely and costly, and the city is going to end up in absorbing those costs. I have not seen an environmental study, a hydrology study, or a hydraulic study on this particular project and the impact, and the impact on the watersheds and protected species. I am assuming that whoever sponsors this project will do those particular studies. The plan does not address Alligator Creek, and I feel that the increased traffic will pose a hazard on that narrow waterway and furthermore increase shoaling along that waterway after where the cut comes through. Because I only have three minutes, I'm going to stop soon. If they are serious about this, they will change to the Barge Canal, which has already been previously used. I urge council to not take on sponsorship of this project. If you do so, I would advise you to only do it after they secure the required permits.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Hans Wilson. I represent the Punta Gorda Boaters Alliance. I wanted to just offer a couple clarifying comments for the council. The first one has to do with the land ownership or the land issue. Mr. McQueen, I don't believe that he's here, but I want everybody to understand that the value of the property that was proffered as part of this submittal was a bottom line dollar that Bucky agreed to in a response to me in terms of what would it take? What would be your bottom line dollar? It's not his intention to collect that value for the property. In the negotiations with the city, he was asking me about the possibility of doing things like transferring development credits, doing things with the city that was a negotiation between the city and Mr. McQueen. I explained to Bucky, I said, I can't do that for you at this stage of the game. I have to have a bottom dollar figure to present to the city and the city engineer so that we knew what you would be willing to take if all bets were off and they wanted to proceed with this project. So, that dollar value is something that he said, that's what my wife and I would be willing to take to let this project go. But he qualified that by saying, this is purely a negotiable price. My interest is to work out something with the city. So, what, what that results in is that the city has latitude of negotiating with Mr. McQueen on reducing that price, and I believe it would be a significant reduction. Another item, channel utilization. I think someone already mentioned, but the total properties potentially using the site, now, there's a total number of properties that would be potentially using the site and paying some sort of assessment, do not represent the total number of boats that are going to be using this location. It's a, it's a percentage. And keep in mind that boating, in many cases, is more of a representation of opportunity than it is actually getting out on the water. There are many people that own a boat that use it maybe once or twice a year, but to that person, it represents an opportunity for them to go boating, and that's part of that boating lifestyle. Some people get out on the boat and they enjoy it mostly by working on it, or maybe having a cocktail on it, or maybe taking the grandkids out on the water. There are other boaters that are out every day, but I assure you that not every person that is going to be able to own a boat and park a boat at their property is going to be using that boat every day and going through that waterway. And I do agree that there is some, some value in doing some studies if the city wants to quantify what the utilization of that channel would be. And that leads me to the channel design component, which we've had some discussions about. I've seen some comments that the channel's not big enough for big boats, while the reality is that Alligator Creek is not big enough for big boats. So, the channel has been designed to try and balance what would be the highest percentage of boaters utilizing that channel relative to the fit in Alligator Creek, and not everybody that owns property in that community is going to be able to use that channel, particularly if they have a boat that's too large to fit in that location.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, your three minutes are up.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
But thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Carolyn, Carolyn, point of order.
Yes, my name is Ed Baldwin.
Can we hold the applause until the very end? Can we, can we hold, have the audience, please, hold the applause?
Yes, I think that would be appropriate.
I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Ed Baldwin. I'm a resident of PGI for 25 years. I've had various boats on power and sailboats. I sail quite a bit, oftenly, in the canals and stuff through, out to Ponce de Leon Park. In my experience over the years of boating, this is one of the best communities to boate. But we do have an issue with the canal because, like Hans said, some of the larger boats cannot use it, sailboats that have a good draft cannot use it. On many occasions, I have run aground in Side Gator Creek with smaller boats and have been stuck. And therefore, it could not accept anything more than a four-foot draft. So, there, coming out of the back section in the birds area where I live, we can count the boats in one day on our hands, both of them. So, we watch the boats move. I'm constantly in the yard. I'm totally retired. I see the boats move. I don't see that many boats to warrant the fact that we are going through all of this aggravation just to move, open up a cat canal, and subject the wildlife to the severe acidity of, acidity of the water that is trapped in the back canals. I clean the bottom of my boat. I can attest to the fact that the water is not that clear in the back canals as opposed to the water that is up forward. I'm opposed to it, and as a taxpayer, I think if it was to be done, where Burnt Store residents could use it to get as far across these canals as over to Harpoon Harry's, I believe that the whole community should put this to a vote, and therefore, everyone pay their own share of it. Because if, this way, it would take the load off of everyone, and it would be an easier way to solve the problem of who wants to pay, who doesn't want to pay. I don't think that an association should dictate that we need a canal cut through. I think that should be voted on by the residents of the entire area. That's what I feel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Please, we're holding applause. Thank you.
Yes. My name is Chuck Bettinson. I live in Punta Gorda, in Burnt Store Isles, in fact. And I've heard a lot on April 6th and reading the comments about the benefits of the proposed Bird Pass cut through. And I've heard that a rising tide will float all boats, and it will benefit everyone. And I would suggest that the council look at it in a slightly different way. To me, it seems like this is a zero-sum game, a classic zero-sum game, with a group of winners and a group of losers. And for illustration of that, all you really need to do is look at the map, which is attached to the agenda materials online, which illustrates where the Bird Pass would be. That map very neatly draws a line down the side of the Bird Section and eliminates from the map 2,600 users who pay into an MSBU for Alligator Creek, including Charlotte Park, Windmill Village, and Burnt Store Isles. We should really not look, I believe, at this project as a zero-sum game. How can, how can this be made if it's going to be done into a win-win of some kind? As it stands right now, Alligator Creek is going to lose, and the people upstream in Alligator Creek are going to lose because they're going to have to fight their way through the additional... the additional congestion. But maybe there won't be congestion, because I've heard a couple of people just say today, hardly any boats will use this. If that's the case, why do it?
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. No applause, please.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Burlon. I live in the Byrd section. This is a boating community. All of Pontagorda is a boating community. We have a beautiful marine environment. We have an incredible harbor. This is one amenity that we could certainly add to what we have here with the wonderful canal system, the marinas, the fabulous sailing and power boating on the harbor, out to the islands. If we were a golf course community, and we added something to the clubhouse or the course, it would be for the good of all. I don't see this as a Byrd section amenity. I see it as a Pontagorda amenity. I also see it as a safety factor. If Ponce inlet were ever closed or blocked by a boat aground in inclement weather, people would not be able to get in. This gives you another way in. I don't believe that only the Byrd section would use it on a daily basis. If you're going south from Pontagorda, if you're going out to the islands, Pelican Bay, you'd have your choice of going all the way around to Ponce, going north, coming back to go south, a chance to get in out of weather much sooner if things get rough out there. I just think it's for the good of all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Todd Cassetta. I am one of the 2,600 that uses the Alligator Creek, and I think it's a wonderful idea to help our neighbors in the Byrd section get access to the harbor. I think it's a terrible idea for them to put the burden of the volume of traffic and pollution and everything else into the Alligator Creek. Why burden their neighbors with this issue? Why not find their own way out, a new way out? Because all you're doing is moving some of the boats from an already overburdened Ponce into an already overburdened Alligator Creek. It makes no logical sense. If you're going to apply for permits to the state DEP and the feds, go for another opening, because sooner or later, at build-out, we're going to need more space. You're just making one problem better and another one worse.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, my name is Dick Baron. I live in the Alligator Creek Waterway, and I'd just like to point out two very short things. Number one, the city opened up a comment site. There were seventeen perceived positive impacts that were listed. There were twenty-nine perceived negative impacts. There was more than 50% negative impacts than there were positive against opening the Byrd section into Alligator Creek. I would hope that the city would take their own survey that they did to heart. I mean, obviously, there's a lot more against than there is for, other than the folks that live in the Byrd section. The other thing that I'd like to point out is if this comes to fruition and happens, the last time that there was a wreck on I-75 at the bridge, all of that traffic was redirected to US-41. You're going to redirect more than 100% potential of boats that are already using Alligator Creek into Alligator Creek. I mean, you're looking at, during the season, an exorbitant amount of traffic, and I thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Hank Burlon. I live in the Isles and the Byrd section, and I just want to address, there have been many comments in the newspaper and by other people, that this was gonna cause the polluted and stagnant water to flow into the Alligator Creek. It currently does flow through Alligator Creek, and it's not polluted, and it's not stagnant. It's the two tides a day pretty well flush the water in and out, but it would be, there have been a lot of misconceptions about the amount of traffic, and that's not verified. And you've heard people say very few boats go through, and then someone else responded that, "Well, then you don't need that extra outlet if there's very few boats," and it is a benefit to the many people in the Byrd section, because they go from where, say, we live, up to Ponce and come around, and both going and coming. It adds maybe an hour and a half to the time to go out for a short boat ride. But I mainly want to talk about the lack of pollution and the lack of stagnant water. The water's already flowing through that small canal.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is John Fagerberg, and I have a couple questions. I'm trying to figure this out. Everybody talks about how few boats go down the Rim Canal, and the ones that do speed, and we're building a safe haven for people who go out in storms, like the really smart guys out on boats, and we're spending money to fix that? You can't fix stupid. You got stagnant water that you want to dump into a critical estuary, I just don't understand. You know, don't you care about the environment at all? You have kayakers that use Alligator Creek now, and you throw that traffic in there? They'll never be able to get out into harbor anymore. This just doesn't make sense, what you guys are thinking about doing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think we'll, since most of the comments now are starting to become extremely redundant, unless you have something new, sir? Will you have something new to add?
I do.
Okay.
I'm Kevin McCarthy. I live in Pontagorda Isles, and some of these negative comments, I take to heart. I research them online. Most of the information is readily available to all of us. And what I find when you look at the county and the city websites is, for example, on the water quality, is that the canal water quality, there's four categories, scientific names, but basically, you could say excellent, very good, fair, and poor, would be another way of categorizing it. And what you find out in the canals is that the ponds, there's four locations, one is Ponce, and there's three other locations, is that the water quality in the canals is rated either excellent or very good. There's no fair, there's no pores. On the county website, I researched, there's four areas where there is problems with the water quality, and one of them is the northern prong of Alligator Creek. So when you do research on these different negative comments, you find out there's no basis for this stuff. The other thing that I'd like to say on the traffic patterns, have any counts ever been done by city or any entity to compare Alligator Creek with Ponce on actual boat counts going out through there? Can I ask that question? Are there counts?
We're gonna be discussing the issue following citizen comments. We're not responding to questions at this time.
Because I would have to assume that, from my observations, I have made some counts, that yes, Ponce is busy, Alligator Creek appears to be less busy, but all my experiences going through Ponce, through the peak hours, weekends, around fishermen, lots of boat traffic, the fact is, there's never been a problem. I've never experienced an unfriendly gesture, I've never had a close call. Us boaters pretty much know how to maneuver through these canals, so there is no problem, even if there is heavy traffic, that I've seen. So my comments are just, look at all the facts, let's look at research, let's base this on actual factual information, and I have to say that I think we're a model for bringing something like this forward as a project that city council should adopt. We've raised money, we've done some of the work, and we certainly showed the support of a significant, large group of people that want this to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hold the applause, please.
My name is Candy Gulick, and I represent the Alligator Creek Access Committee. I also get tons of email on the issue, being one of the information points for the Alligator Creek information. At this point, we've had three meetings on this, we've had 500 people come to the Isles Yacht Club, 850 people at the workshop, and now a significant number of people here. The constituents that I speak with are interested in knowing what the next steps are. When is it that you're going to take over this issue and deal with it? Are you going to take over this issue? What needs to be done to further present that? Some of the issues here today, speaking about water quality and fish and environment, all of that has to be done through the permitting process. I believe that's the next step that has to be done. That is a city council step that has to be done. A private citizenry cannot do that successfully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Rob's gonna close. Citizen comments, sir, you've already spoke.
That's okay, I've got one. Wait, I want the city to come out with a spreadsheet that says, here's what the cost is for capital, here's what the maintenance cost is, who's paying for it, who's doing the taxes, how we're gonna do that, and pros and cons. It makes it real simple, it gets the facts out, it gets the emotions out of it, and I don't see any of that coming out at all. So it's not just 1.4 million dollars, it's a maintenance cost, who's gonna pay it, who's gonna pay the taxes, how we're gonna maintain it, and the pros and cons for all of it. And then people can sit here and say, did they agree or don't agree with it?
Thank you, sir.
Does it have to be a public hearing?
There's a motion to have a public hearing? Is there a second? There is a second?
Second.
All?
My name is Kell Krautzer, and I've been a resident, permanent resident of PGI for seventeen years. I live in the Byrd section, and until last year, I have spent eight days a week fishing Charlotte Harbor. That's many, many hours. And 98% of those trips, I've used the so-called hole-in-the-wall or poacher's cut to access Alligator Creek, and that entrance is only about 100 yards away from where your proposed cut is. So I'm very familiar with the traffic patterns in Alligator Creek, and to say that Alligator Creek is going to look like the English Channel on D-Day is perfectly ridiculous.
Thank you, sir.
And I know the traffic pattern there, and from a safety standpoint, you already have a no-wake zone. The county has spent big bucks in straightening the access and entrance to that harbor for safety navigation purposes. The effect of additional boats in Alligator Creek is minimal, because many of the boats in the Byrd section certainly don't run all the time, and those that do operate, the fishermen with smaller crafts can use the hole-in-the-wall cut, as I have done 98% of the time. The, this is a win-win situation. Fifteen years ago, there was a group that proposed a cut such as this in exactly the same location as the proposed cut is now. We did not have the financial resources or the expertise that you have now with this engineering firm, so we were forced to drop that project. But now you have people that are capable of negotiation, the various, the various people that need to permit and so forth, and if those permits go through, I see no reason that this cut would not be a plus for Pontagorda.
Thank you, sir. It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion?
Ma'am, this is not a public hearing.
Well, our closed comments. Okay, thank you. It's been moved to closed comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. If you would, put this up on, have this. Mikhail, could I ask you to put up our vision and mission statement?
Each year, as we begin our budget process, we review our strategic plan. It's updated every year. But four years ago, we established a very progressive vision, as Pontagorda is a model for small cities in the United States to live, work, and play, and our mission should help us reach that vision, and it was and is to enhance Pontagorda's identity as a vibrant waterfront community, unique in character and history, and one of the most desirable places to live, work, and visit. Our vision and mission statements, like much of what we do in our city, were developed with community input. They dictate that we preserve and enhance our small-town, self-sufficient community character, that we will work to be an economically sustainable, four-season community and cultural hub of Charlotte County, that we will continue to be a safe and secure community, that we will be a place where residents and visitors alike enjoy the area's natural resources, vibrant downtown, and waterfront amenities, that we will maintain strong partnerships between city government and all sectors of our community, that we will have a financially sustainable city government. All of these, and all of which, help to position ourselves as a model for small cities across the country. The key to our city's vision and mission is sustainability, the ability of our community to consistently thrive over time as we make decisions to improve our city today without sacrificing its future. It demonstrates through policy and practices a long-term view for the community that includes respect for people and for place. Building better and stronger communities is a core responsibility of local government leaders. Sustainable communities are those that maintain a reliable economic base, practical, sound financial management, provide a stable environment for residents, and act as stewards of our land and our environmental resources, all of which provide an immeasurable quality of life. This is what your Pontagorda City Council works on throughout the year, with the assistance of our exceptional staff. This issue of a cut through from PGI's Byrd Section, Alligator Creek, is obviously controversial. As you and our council members have heard through our workshop on April 6th and today, and as this council has read in your many letters and emails, there are many sides to this complex issue, all of which should be explored. None of us want neighbor pitted against neighbor. Pontagorda is not a city of acrimony. It is a city of friends. We work together to work out our differences, and I hope that we would do that regarding this issue as well. Each of my colleagues will have an opportunity to weigh in on the issue. However, I'd like to lead off the discussion with a few observations and some recommendations. Pontagorda has an impressive history. Our downtown historic district, our historic murals, our historical documents to be housed in New History Center, all speak to that history and to the character of our community. We're also a bicycle-friendly community. It has become part of our character. However, we also have a very unique history with 70 miles of canals that flow seaward to the Gulf of Mexico. We are a boating community. It is also part of our character. Along with a wonderful historic district, our many pathways to walk to walk, run, and bike, we have access to beautiful Charlotte Harbor for all kinds of boating, fishing, and water sports. There are many unknowns with this project. However, I feel strongly that to fulfill our vision, to fulfill our mission, our city council should make the decision as to whether we move forward. I have three recommendations. First, there is no need for a vote. We did not take a vote on moving forward with our RO plant, and it was at a cost of $32.5 million. We did not take a vote on our parking garage at $14 million. On our pathways, harbor walk linear parks, over $17 million. We did not take a vote. Secondly, I firmly believe we should move forward with the project. It will be a long process with many unknowns and needs to begin as we plan for future growth. I recommend that we direct staff to take the leadership role by incorporating the project as an action item for the fiscal year 2016 strategic plan, and to work with interested parties during the process. Our community is growing and will continue to grow. Home sales are up as our building permits. Whether we want growth or not, it's happening, and it will continue to happen. We need to be thinking toward the future growth and the build-out of PGI. This council has already been discussing concerns over fewer and fewer empty lots to stage seawall repairs. The cut-through has been discussed for almost 23, 20 years. It's been discussed by residents, community organizations, council members, vote committees, and now with the efforts of community residents, there is a good start on the study. Thank you, Ms. The actual cut-through may be very different from what has been proposed. Once we begin working with the regulatory agencies as well as other stakeholders, we might learn of other limitations as well as other opportunities. With continued growth, having a second egress and ingress from and to the Isles will not only be an asset but also necessary. Having access from and to Alligator Creek will be an asset for our entire community for a number of the reasons that have been mentioned, and not only for those that live in the Bird's Section, but all of Pontagorda. Further, with fewer boats traveling with their motors on for the 40 to 45 minutes to Ponce Inlet, there undoubtedly will be less stress on those seawalls, reducing costs for repair and maintenance, and less pollution in our air and water, healthier for all of us. And while the jury is still out on the effect of water flow and exchange, generally more water flow increases breeding grounds for fish and aquatic life. Lastly, I recommend we do not assess those who live in the Bird's Section, even though so many have been willing and offered to be assessed, and even many outside the Bird's Section and many other parts of Pontagorda. Staff have been very creative in finding funds for previous planned projects, and I am confident that when we pass the challenge to them, they will find the grant funds and develop other strategies to fund the cut-through, at least to begin the process. Our vision, our mission, and our strategic priorities of infrastructure sustainability and quality of life are addressed with this project. The city council has made decisions over the past years, some very difficult decisions, and those decisions were not only to do things right for Pontagorda, but most importantly, to do the right things for Pontagorda. I believe moving forward on this project at this time, with council and staff taking the lead, and without burdening any residents at this time for funding, is the right thing to do for our city. Now I would open it up for other council members.
No applause, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would like to acknowledge and thank the Boaters Alliance for taking the initiative in organizing this project, which obviously has focused our attention on safety and additional access to Charlotte Harbor from Pontagorda Isles. We have a chart showing the Pontagorda Isles. I wonder if we can get that on the screen, the northern section and the southern section of PGI?
The southern.
Thank you. Looking at the chart, the northern portion of PGI contains about 3,000 canal-front lots accommodated by two access points to the harbor, Bass Inlet and Pompano Inlet. The southern section of PGI has almost as many, about 2,900, using only a single access to the harbor through Ponce Inlet. In addition to having to accommodate that additional volume, Ponce bears the impact of two fishing piers and a boat ramp. This burden on Ponce will substantially increase as the inevitable build-out of approximately 1,300 additional canal-front lots comes, come online. While I wholeheartedly support additional access to the harbor based on a quality-of-life component, my ultimate concern is for the safety of our resident boaters as they move through Ponce Inlet, dealing with fishing lines in the water, trailers unloading and loading boats in the inlet. These impacts will only increase as the population grows and cause additional strain in our resource. Mayor, with your permission, I would, I have asked John Kennedy, the city's Marine Patrol Office, to share with us some of the safety issues that our resident boaters deal with as they navigate through Ponce. And after he does that, if I could report on some statistics that have been provided to us by Boat US and Cito, I would like to share that information with everybody. Is Officer Kennedy here?
Officer Kennedy, come forward, please.
John Kennedy, Pontagorda Marine Officer. How are we doing today? It's been long. What specific questions can I answer for you?
Issues, well, I tell you what, why don't I read the, the second part of the statistics that I received, and then perhaps you can comment on, on those. That might be a more appropriate way to go. I received information from both Cito and Boat US on incidents in Ponce. And over the past several years, Boat US and Cito responded to 55 towing incidents in Ponce and 15 groundings. 15 of the toes were indicated to be as a result of mechanical breakdown. No reason was stated for the other toes. 12 of the groundings were vessels 35 feet and larger, while all are significant, two deserve special recognition. A 41-foot sailing vessel that grounded just passed the ramp and severely bent its rudder and had to be hauled out. The other was a large catamaran that experienced engine failure while in a marked channel at the entrance. The captain was able to deploy his anchor, but ended up along the mangroves with his rigging in the trees due to the heavy traffic and a rushing tide. So it's that type of an issue. Are you familiarity with, with the inlet, if you could elaborate?
Absolutely. Ponce Inlet does have a strong current, especially outgoing tides. It can be difficult to navigate with fishermen that's on the first fishing pier. I have made it part of my mission to educate them that the boater does have the right of way, but it should be a courtesy when reeling in your line, simply for the fact I have responded for several props that have had fish, monofilament wrapped around them. The grounding, I have not had any reported since canal maintenance, and Marine Contracting Group has finished dredging Ponce Inlet. That has made a huge difference in that area. Now that a lot of the snowbirds have started to leave, you know, congestion have slowed up, slowed down, excuse me, I have dealt with in years past, to this year, of persons at a low tide backing off the ramp and getting their trailers stuck, hence sliding back into, submerging their vehicles in the water. Those are daily occurrences that I deal with at Ponce Inlet.
Thank you, thank you, John. I, I concur with the mayor. I think that we need to pursue additional access from PGI out to the harbor, whether that turns out to be Alligator Creek or, or a different resource to deal with. The growth in the future, I think, is essential. If we move ahead with, with the city staff, move ahead with the project.
Yes, Rachel.
I also took some notes. Because I cannot get to the proposed area from my boat at my house, I enjoyed a detailed water tour hosted by Officer Kennedy, who provided me with a state-of-the-art lifesaving device that I wore the entire time, so thank you for that. Because I wanted to see it waterside. I cannot access that area from my house. When the RO plan is built, I will have RO water in my house, so I see it a little bit differently than you do. Two things came out of that water tour, two, two global ideas came out for me. The project, it does support our overall mission to enhance Pontagorda's identity as a vibrant waterfront community, unique in character. It definitely supports that mission that we all have bought into, that we created. But it does benefit one area. I can't even get there from my house, as I said. I'm not gonna get into the weeds about the traffic, the environmental, because all of that will be vetted out. There's a very long list of agencies that would, that have experts that will tell us. I mean, yes, people that have knowledge, that use those areas, I don't doubt that you know, but we have to rely on what the permitting and the application process people tell us. So that will be a long, lengthy applications process, and it won't be easy. I mean, there will definitely be hurdles to overcome. This is controversial. I'm disappointed that the group did not poll their membership. I mean, they did not poll their membership to even, they put a survey out there to everyone, but their actual membership was not polled. That is disappointing to me. I also like to note that I sat on the city's sales tax committee, where we looked at this project to be included in that funding source, and it was denied by the entire group. So that could have been another funding source. If it was accepted by the city as the whole and the committee members at that time, it would have been funded through that source. I would like the city to conduct a vote on the potential property owners in the benefit area. I mean, that was one of the key things that came out of the group hiring Hans Wilson, is that they finally decided that there is a benefit area and that they would most likely be funding the project. I consider that a basic level of due diligence and a way to confirm this overwhelming support that we have at these meetings. If the overwhelming support is there, the vote will show it. The details of what we send out to the probable benefit area is for us to work out. They have their number, the city produced the number several years ago. We could, we could put a range on there of what an assessment might look like. Obviously, there's plenty of unknowns that go along with this, but we would have to have a low range and a high range. This survey, I believe, would also serve as a notice to property owners that may be absent. I mean, yes, you people here today are following the issue, but we have many vacant property owners or even condo owners that do not follow city politics, that may not even know that this is going on. To Hans Wilson's point, not all owners will own or want a boat, but if we do create a special benefit unit, they will be paying into it whether they own or want a boat at all. So I think they need to be noticed, and they should have a say into it. I also would like to say that, yes, the city has done some great projects, but I see those as public benefit projects, and I see this as a special benefit to an area. What those defining lines are, that's gonna be another controversial detail to be worked out, but I, I just feel very strongly that way.
Yes, Nancy?
Thank you, Mayor. I really enjoyed your comments as you opened our meeting today, and I felt that those comments where you suggested that we must all continue to communicate and respect each other and work together were very important, because that is what has brought this community to where it is. That spirit of collaboration and teamwork helped us 10 years ago and has made this community an outstanding community. I've looked at this, this issue for many, many years, and had many years of discussion. And I, I guess I have to look at this from a standpoint of, how was this problem created? And to me, this was created by the developer. The developer created lots of access points as this map shows in the northern part of PGI. But there are two major areas of our boating community that only have one access point. One is the Ponce Inlet for the entire southern half of PGI, and the other is Alligator Creek, which actually serves 3,000 properties. And there's no way to create another access point for those 3,000 properties. Those 3,000 properties include part of what is in the city and part of what is in the county. And some of those residents that are in the county are, are potentially future residents of, of Pontagorda, so we welcome them. And, and welcome all, everyone's ideas. To me, I, it's all about creating a win-win solution. And, and I look at what, I've listened to all of the, the comments, I've read all the emails. It seems to me that boater safety is important. If we're going to be a premier waterfront community, we must do that. It seems that we should try to balance the inlet access somehow, and I don't know what the answer to that is. Is, is Alligator Creek, a cut to Alligator Creek the answer or not?
I don't know.
I don't know that answer. What I do know is that we need to preserve our environment and the least cost to achieve these goals. And I look at what's going on, I said, the developer caused this problem. In Burnstour Isles, we are more of a self-contained unit, and we have some issue, things going on, because we believe the developer did not do what we wanted the developer to do. And we are doing it at our own expense, and we are doing what Rachel suggested in doing, pulling our, our, our community to get input on that. One of those is widening the, our access into Alligator Creek, and we're doing that at our, our expense. We are also looking at the developer did not properly dredge our perimeter canal. We're not asking the city of Pontagorda to do that, but we could. And, and we are a special benefit area, and we could ask to have the, the widening of our access into Alligator Creek paid for by the city, but we are doing that through our canal assessment dollars, and we're looking to do that through our canal assessment dollars. We have a potential seven, over $7 million underground utility project, which we are, we are going to be bringing to city council to discuss with council in the upcoming future. And that we're looking to assess ourselves again. And if we are going to pay for a cut-through to Alligator Creek to benefit a specific area, then I suggest that all of these projects in Burnstour Isles should also be paid for by public dollars. I don't think that's the right thing to do. I think that I'm in favor of us continuing this. I'm not opposed to this project, but I, what I do believe is that from a strategic planning, it should be, not that this project itself should be on there, but that we should examine all of our inlets and make this more general, a goal or an action item that's more general in nature, and that would examine our inlets, examine the boating safety statistics, examine all of the, the boating tracking, as someone mentioned, the boating data. And once we get boating data and we get a lot of data, we can make a lot of decisions. And I think that whether or not it's Alligator Creek or it's the Barge Canal, whatever the, the right thing to do will come out of, of pursuing this and studying this. So I'm in favor of, of moving forward with it, but in a more general nature.
Candy?
I am also in favor of moving forward and the city taking a leadership role. I think it does benefit a certain area of the city. They have offered to pay for it, and I'm all for moving forward and seeing what comes out of it. You've all already said everything else, so I'm not gonna repeat you.
My recommendation to, at this point in time, would be for us to move forward, and I appreciate what Nancy is saying. To open it up to just safety issues, I feel would be, again, just allowing it to dissipate in terms of where, what some of the issues in terms of egress and ingress are. And my suggestion was that, yes, we move forward as a council, that we make the decision. I don't, I truly don't believe that a vote is necessary. We've not voted on anything else. I do believe that at this time, in terms of moving forward, the city should take the responsibility to begin the assessment of what are our options. And I agree with you, it may not be Alligator Creek, but we are growing, we are growing out of our space. And while I wouldn't use- And while I wouldn't use Alligator Creek, I mean, I can easily get to Ponce in 10 minutes. So I'm not an affected party, so it's not as though I would be using it. But I do believe for our entire community that we need to look broadly, to think, again, futuristically, you know, what is needed? And we need to have additional access in and out of our canals. Nancy, did you have your hand up?
No, I, I would agree with that, that looking at it overall, letting, having the city take a leadership role in that and, and looking at it from a balanced perspective and, and that can shed a light on all of the, the community as opposed to one specific area. But I do think that it's important that if, if an area is going to be specifically benefiting from this, that it has to be, as has been proposed, a special assessment area to, to fund it. Because it's, it is not like the RO plant. The RO plant is a, as a, as was stated, it's a, it serves our entire community. And I know that people have said, oh, well, this is going to benefit Burnstour Isles. It is, the way it stands today, the way it's proposed, it's a win-lose. And, and we need to create a win-win.
We do need to create a win-win, and I would, again, offer the, again, the option, and maybe if I wasn't clear. I think to begin the process, that there should not be anyone, any residents taking responsibility. I think the city should take responsibility, and once we learn the direction that we're taking, then that probably would indicate who would be responsible then for paying for it. Kim?
Well, my only question about that is if we go ahead and do that, and we spend staff time and we do that, and then we poll those affected and who would be responsible, and they say no, we've wasted a lot of time on some...
We haven't polled our community for anything else.
Burnstour Isles has. They're polling their community.
We, we have just polled, Burnstour Isles has just polled the Burnstour Isles Association members on an underground utility project, and the response came back with a 77.23% in favor. Our next step, which I just met with the team yesterday, is we are going to be having a public vote this summer, and it's going to take place, we believe, in late July possibly. But it will be, we will be involving our, our city clerk's office in helping us do that, and we will be actually voting to whether or not we want to assess ourselves to at least assess ourselves $75 a property to have FPL do a study and come back and tell us what the overall project is going to cost. And the preliminary numbers look to be over $7 million. It's, so it's a, it's a sizable number, but we, we are doing it and...
And I applaud, and I applaud, applaud BSI for doing that and applaud you for, for taking on that leadership role. With this situation, again, you heard from, again, a Punta Gorda Isles resident does not have access to that. You have other people who would not use it. So I, what my concern would be in terms of polling, you know, where do you cut the line? And that I don't want to pit neighbor against neighbor. I am very, very much concerned about that. We have, our community is, again, I'm just concerned.
Yes, Rachel?
If, if we don't create a special benefit area, then you're suggesting that the city take this on as a, as a project and pay for it in whole?
I'm suggesting that there are probably other ways of paying for the project. We're looking at 1.5, 2 million, maybe 2 and 1/2 million. We have found ways to pay for other projects that have cost a lot more than that. I'm just thinking that there's, there are opportunities. I'm not saying...
There, there was an opportunity, not to repeat myself, but the sales tax dollars, that was an opportunity. That did not fly. If, if it was an overwhelming support of our entire community, it would have been included on that list. And I feel very strongly, and there are several members of the committee in the audience today that were there for the process. You know, we've had these two meetings. It's pep, it's a pep rally type of environment, which these people are passionate about the project. If, if that's so, what, what harm does taking a poll of the property owners? What, what harm is in that? I don't see any harm in taking a poll. I, I know what you're saying. Where do we draw the lines? But somehow, we have to figure that out. I mean, that's where I would like to see the next step be, is to try to define the benefit area and poll those residents and, you know, come up with some, some thresholds of response rates and approval rates to feel comfortable with it.
But at this point in time, we're not even sure if the cut through, where it would happen, is the actual area.
Right. This would just be a global question. Would you be willing to pay $1,500 to $3,000 over whatever period of time? And we, we could have staff come up with different hybrids based on the information that we've been given from the engineer and what our city staff has done in the past. We could come up with different scenarios. We could decide on which scenario we think best outlines what we might do and ask for the support of the property owners.
Well, Howard, do you have any idea how much it might cost to take this project through the permitting process?
If you went by the report that Hans Wilson did, it's about 400, was it about $100,000? But we have not gone out yet with an RF, with a proposal to see, seek an engineering firm to come back and actually negotiate a proposal. But the report talked about about $100,000.
I feel that we, at this point, we need to turn staff on to exploring the viability of the project. And if it, if it's, if it becomes reasonable, if it can be done, I believe the overall cost of the project may be negotiated down. We've heard some conversation about Mr. McQueen wanting to exchange some density, density for the project. That may have an impact. I'm confident that they're, based on the safety concerns that we have, that there will, there should be some funding, grant funding from WCIND and MAC. I thought so. We should, we should have the city investigate the viability of the project. And once we know, or, or know or don't know if we have a viable project, we can then take a poll of the community that would be designated to pay for it.
Again, I would like to suggest that we need to look at the overall goals of what we're trying to achieve rather than to look specifically at an Alligator Creek cut. And, and I'll, let me give you an example of why I feel the way I do. In Burnstour Isles, we have a, a problem. We have a problem because the Florida Department of Transportation, in over a period of a decade, made two independent decisions. One was to close Madrid Boulevard off to northbound US 41 traffic. Second one was, and that eliminated any patron or delivery vehicle from the shopping center being able to go northbound from that action. Then when they widened Burnstour Road, they closed off the, the drive between the shopping center and Home Depot to, to be able to turn left onto Burnstour Road and go to 41 and go north. So virtually now, there is no direct access to US 41 from the shopping center. So traffic now is seeking all kinds of circuitous routes to get to where they need to go. And Tripoli Boulevard in Burnstour Isles is turned into a thoroughfare. It is an unintended consequence of actions. And, and we presented this on Monday afternoon to the MPO, and Secretary Haddaway is going to take another look at this and work with the city in helping to try to come up with a solution. It's because FDOT did not take an overall holistic view that they created a problem. When I look at, from where I sit and representing the lower half of the southern portion of our, of our community with over 3,000 properties who access Alligator Creek, if we take the Bird section that build out and combine 2,800 properties on top of that, we're talking close to 6,000 properties which will have access to Alligator Creek. That's the largest outlet or inlet of anywhere in our community. And we can talk about statistics, and we can talk about how many boats, and we can talk about... But just looking at numbers of properties, Alligator Creek is a narrow body, and it is not built to take that. It, it, it might work if we re-engineer Alligator Creek. That's going to cost some dollars. So, again, taking a holistic view, I think it's the most important thing.
We're going to have to take a break for our videographer, so we will take a, do you need five minutes? Okay, thank you.